It's mating of the common council of the city of Beaver Dam to order and we will start with the roll call.
Burnett?
Here.
Burnett? Bree?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Larity?
I, uh, here, excuse me.
Ganski?
Here.
Hailey? Keel?
Here.
Olson? Perkins?
Here.
Wild?
Here.
Yads?
Here.
So.
Here.
And let the record show that Alder Hailey has made arrangements to be gone. She's excused. She may be joining us online if possible. Okay. Oh, that's right. And you're right. And also Alder Olson was gonna, oh, there he is. Yeah, he was gonna attempt to join us online as well. Yeah, so, and he's there. Okay, great. Okay, first up, we will all rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silent deliberation. Okay, I want to welcome everyone here to our meeting. And before we begin, I want to go over the rules for the first item on our agenda, which is our informal public hearing. These are the rules for the public hearings that we have at the start of every council meeting. So I just want to review the rules. Number one, if you wish to speak, you must sign in before the first speaker begins. So again, if there's anyone who wants to sign in now is your last opportunity. If you are online, please raise your hand. It will get you on the list so that you can speak. Each, we will take the speakers in the order they've signed in. Each speaker may speak once and is limited to two minutes. Speakers are asked to give their name and where they live before they begin. Please refrain from using profanity, calling anyone names, or yelling out comments while someone else is speaking. Anyone who is uncooperative will be asked to leave. After our last public hearing, city leaders took the questions that were raised and attempted to answer them in a series of handouts that have been circulated online in the community and are available here tonight. Please try to focus your comments on things that are new questions or concerns if possible. Legally, the council cannot respond to any items that are not on this evening's agenda. Our intent is to gather your questions and concerns and respond to them in the near future. We have a lengthy list of business items that the council must address following this public hearing. As all is perfect acceptable. It is perfectly acceptable for audience members to stay for whatever portion of the meeting that they wish. Okay. That being said, I think we are ready. And the first person on the signup sheet is Mary Aplin.
Hi. First of all, I want to thank all of you for your service to our community. I know when you decided to run for council that you wanted to have an impact on Beaver Dam's future and make it a positive. All of us here are here for the same reason. Also, I think all of you, either dignity and respect. And so do we. That was all the fun stuff, too.
Okay.
I would like to propose that for the new data center project, a citizen committee be formed to help oversee the project and make sure that the promises made are promises met. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Oh, and one other item I think I forgot to mention. When you come forward, if you could say your name and then say where you live, just in terms of whether you're a city resident, township of Trenton, township of Beaver Dam, or if you live in some other community, that would, that's helpful. Okay, next up is Stephanie Wiedenhafte.
Stephanie Wiedenhafte.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right. It's a good German name. My family has lived here for generations. In fact, members of my family founded neighboring towns. So to say I have a vested interest in my community is an understatement. The other night, a little boy went missing. And within half an hour's time, hundreds of our citizens responded and were on the streets looking for him. Because this is a community of people. This is a community of people who care about each other. This is not the business of this Beaver Dam, of the city of Beaver Dam. And while I can respect the need to have certain items be business items, when it comes to the livelihood, health, and safety of our community, that is not a business decision. That is a community decision. And the fact that this was made behind closed doors is very shameful. When all this is said and done, we are all still going to be neighbors. We are all still going to be community members. Whether you are recalled and replaced, or whether you stay in your seat, we are going to have to work together somehow. So decorum is necessary, absolutely. But I think anger is also allowable. We trusted you. We elected you to represent our best interests, and that did not happen here. You were all starry-eyed and excited about numbers that were promised. Numbers that are hoped for. Numbers that are not legally binding. Numbers that do not have contracts attached to them. Where are the legal documents? Where is the environmental impact report? Where is the archaeological survey? We have broken ground before anybody in town knew what was going on specifically that this was an AI data center by Meta. And I, for one, am not interested in the death that is AI. I am interested in the life that is water and our planet, Mother Earth.
Thank you. Next up is Jackson Brook. Am I saying that correctly?
Good evening. My name is Jackson Brook. I reside in the town of Beaver Dam, and I'm a senior at Beaver Dam High School. I want to thank all of you here who have dedicated your careers supporting the youth of this community. I'm here tonight to speak for the future generation of Beaver Dam. Right now, decisions are being made that will shape the community my generation inherits. Yet there's been an alarming lack of representation for the people who will live longest with the consequences. I understand why this project looked appealing in the moment. I truly did. But I want to ask, what guarantee was secured for our future? What guarantee do we have that this company won't argue depreciation on the TID the same way Walmart did with their property taxes, leaving taxpayers on the hook? What guarantee protects us if they walk away from the site the moment the incentives expire? What guarantee protects us if our water, if the closed-loop cooling system suddenly isn't enough? What guarantee protects our energy grid when demand spikes beyond what was promised? What guarantee protects the generation that will be here long after the ribbon cutting? Other communities have already faced the consequences of trusting promises. In Mesa, Arizona, Meta assured residents their data center would barely use water. Within two years, they requested millions more gallons because the cooling system needed adjustments. The community had no protections, and they paid the price. Beaver Dam should not become the next example. Beaver Dam is a farming town at its core, a place built on land, water, and resources our grandparents worked to preserve. They protected those resources for us, and I'm asking you to protect them for the generation that comes after us. Technology is evolving faster than any of us can predict. None of us can guarantee that this massive AI data center will still be necessary even 10 years from now. But we can guarantee that our environment, our taxes, and our community identity will still matter. So as an 18-year-old deciding where I might build my future family, what guarantee can you give me and every young person here in this town that this will still be a community worth choosing? Thank you.
Thank you, Jackson. Next up is Deborah Dorford.
I'm Deborah Dorford, a citizen of Beaver Dam. Concerning the AI data center owned by Meta, here are the publicized facts and timeline. November 4th, 2024. It was publicized about the Beaver Dam City Council meeting. The statement read, "The creation of tax increment District Number 10 to secure a large-scale development on the city's north side." December 2nd, 2024. It got publicized that the Beaver Dam City Council held a closed session to discuss a developers' agreement with Degus LLC. February 9th, 2025. It was publicized that the agreement with Degus LLC was unanimously approved by the city council members in a closed session. In April 2025, it was publicized again, adding that Degus LLC is registered to a Delaware firm. Last Wednesday, November 12th, a reporter asked you, Bobby, what you had to say in regards to the opposition voicing complete secrecy on your part. You replied, "The public knew in February. They knew it was an AI data center." You blatantly lied. You all are deceptive. You all purposely withheld that Degus LLC was a front for Meta and that the development was an AI data center. You all purposely disrespected and disregarded your constituents. You all displayed an abusive power. Earlier today on Daily Dodge TV, Bobby, you explained to the public all about data centers and how they've been around for many, many years. An AI data center is completely different from previous data centers built and have only begun to be built in the last three years. You and Larry are seen fist bumping each other with smiles and laughing. Yes, great job. You deceived the public again.
Next up is Wayne Oyn.
Howdy, I'm Wayne Oyn. I live just down the street, a little piece here. I've known some of you since before you came up here on the council, and I've, you know, I've never judged you as ignorant or unwise or even in the wake of some of your mistakes and whatnot, but some of the others I don't, I don't know at all. But for me and my household, we've been related to Beaver Dam since the 1800s and the area around it. We drive on the roads around here that they built, that we take an aggregate out of the quarries that they found, and some of you probably attend the churches that they helped found. So we have a vested interest in this town. So here's what I understand. As the timeline was put out, six years ago, a line energy brokered a deal with a city to annex property in as a business center. Two years ago, someone signed a non-disclosure agreement and with whom we now safely assume was Meta. In the fall last year, you held a supposed open hearing about what is now TD 10 or TID 10. It was so well-announced that only one person came with their parent, and they only lived in the city limits. There were a couple of other meetings that you guys had, the last of which was in December when you passed the development plan for the business center. Now, two months later after that, as you just said, in February, the BDA DC made some news release of a significant development for the business center. Interestingly, though, that was announced 30 days beyond the statute of limitations allowing anyone to challenge it. And now, finally this week, you guys say, oh, it's officially announced that it's a private meeting. In the private meeting, the development is in question, is an AI data center. A lot different than a regular data center. I hope you know that. I find it suspect, and that's put a little bit mildly, that last year I received a couple of flyers in the mail about the referendum for the school and what you wanted $150 million to build it on property you already had bought for it. But somehow, the 110 million TID, our commitment to run a municipal resources, the eminent domain loaded over our neighbors by the energy companies, local environmental impacts, and a litany of other factors surrounding this AI data center are practically nothing. We got nothing from you. So this is a gross negligence, and you call this business as usual.
Can you wrap up your statement?
I will. I believe you guys are misguided. I believe you got poor advice, and it needs to be fixed somehow. So, thank you.
Next up is Frances Jennings.
Good evening to everyone. Thank you for this audience. I have been a resident of Trenton Township for 37 years. Purchased the house in 1988. We are now one mile from the boundary, fenced boundary, where the bulldozing has taken place. I have great misgivings about what will happen to the aquifer out there, to our water supply, to our electrical grid, and to insulin costs. I would, by the way, like to thank all the speakers who went before me and the young man from Beaver Dam High School. I happen to know one of the men who sold his home when it was initially purchased. He was told that Alliant was building a power station, not that there was going to be a data center. I would like to know if the permits to break ground have yet been granted because they've done an awful lot of work already and that I have great misgivings about whether there really is going to be a closed-loop system, whether the land will be gated to Ducks Unlimited in Beaver Dam, and what happens after, before, or after the 10-year tax abatement. Because it was posted on our website that it's possible they could walk and the city would be defaulted into reclaiming the land and that, you know, any of the promises made would not be carried out to restore the land or the water. I would like you to give this great deliberation to protect those citizens who will be most immediately impacted, which would be Trenton Township and, of course, the rest of the Beaver Dam area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Chuck Dieterman. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. We'll get to you later. Next up is Kate Miller.
Hello. I'm Kate Miller. I grew up here in Beaver Dam, and I've called it home my entire life. And I believe all of you want to do the best thing for the city. It'd be really, really sad if you didn't. And I believe that's why you all wanted to be on city council. And unfortunately, it feels like because of the lack of transparency in the beginning, it feels like we can't trust you guys. And the rumor mill has been going nuts. Like, people are accusing you guys of taking bribes, like. And if that was true, like, we're really in trouble. So I just want to say also that I feel like maybe you guys saw that big number and couldn't let it walk away. And I'm reading all these facts that you released, and one of them that stood out to me is Meta aims to be water-positive by 2030. I mean, what do you mean by aims to? Is there not a plan for that already? Like, they're just lying to you, obviously. And through, through you, I mean, you're lying to us if you're, if you're saying those things and repeating those things. It feels like a lie. And it also feels like that little publicity stunt you guys did last Wednesday with the shovels and the Meta logos. Like, you might as well have Meta tattooed on your foreheads. Like, like, what is, what are, what are you, what are you doing here? You're not doing anything for us. Obviously, you're not listening to us. You're not listening to our neighbors. I mean, please start listening to us and please start responding to us because if you don't, then the rumor mill will just get out of control, as it has already, and there's no going back from that. And to be honest with you guys, I think you've broken the trust of the city, and I don't know where we go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Gabriel Reyes.
Hello, my name is Gabriel. I live here in Beaver Dam. First, let me apologize for my language last time. I promise I will be far less colorful this time around. My main point that I want to talk about today is the quote-unquote "jobs" that are coming for this town. The idea that these jobs are for the people living in this town is foolish. It shows how little you actually know about your constituents. As somebody who has worked alongside many of the people in Beaver Dam, I know for a fact that none of these jobs, none of them are even capable of applying for these jobs. In the 2020 census, the median amount of money for families was over 73,000. Single homes were 53,000. A cursory Google search will reveal that most of these jobs are well over 75,000 and higher and require years of experience and degrees that most of these people just do not have. These are not jobs for people who live in Beaver Dam. These are jobs for people who live outside the city and, if we're being honest, who don't even live in the state or even the country. On top of that, these jobs are possibly not even permanent. These now, there has been speculation that once AI reaches a good enough point, most of these jobs will just be handed off to AI anyway. My name is Gabriel Reyes Jr., and Beaver Dam shouldn't have people who don't understand their constituents. Vote for me for District 10 alderman.
Next up is Steve Riduski. I hope I said that correctly. Sorry.
I forgive you.
Do you want to tell me how it's pronounced?
It's Rijeski.
Rijeski, thank you.
Yeah. So years and years of wanton spending have gotten us to this point. I know some of you, we can't blame some of you because you were handed, handed this situation where the spending has gotten out of control. And now we're dependent on some big corporation to come in and financially save us from our spending indiscretions here. I like to talk in facts. This TID document wasn't posted until October of 2025 because our citizens group requested it. Some of the one-liners out of this TID document, inflation is assumed to be 0.00% over the life of this TID. The city will receive approximately $187 million and change in tax increment through 2045. The TID should be able to pay a total of $128 million in expenditures, should. To me, financial ineptitude, do you guys really believe in 0% interest inflation over the next 21 years on this project? Administration and organizational costs to the city, $10,000 a year for the next 21 years. Well, that's a magical number. Wow. Where did that come from? You, you said at the beginning, Bobby, that you'd like to answer some of our questions. I'd like answers to those questions. Where did that $10,000 come from? Who came up with that number? How did you guys believe that? Do you guys believe it's 0% inflation over the next 21 years? Am I to believe that that's your financial intelligence for our community? I'm finding that the people that are supporting this project don't have a well on property right next to this project. I'm finding that the people that are for it
Okay, I need to wrap up your statement.
Are expecting profit or are profiting from it. Now, I know a lot of you, and I know a lot of you clamor about big business and
Sir?
Muscling politically.
I need you to
I'll finish it. Give me 10 more seconds. 15. Political muscling of against big business and big corporations, and here we are, rolling out the red carpet in our own community for this giant big business to come in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Rianne McCauley.
Uh, it's pronounced Rianne, and I don't think I need the mic.
Sorry.
First, I'd like to remind everyone that this town that we call Beaver Dam was not always ours. In fact, it belonged to the Ho-Chunk and Potawatomi tribes, who I don't see, at least as far as I know, any representation of them as we destroy this land for an AI data center. I'm 22 years old. I moved to Beaver Dam when I was halfway through high school because I believed that Beaver Dam would be a better place for me and my future. My family moved here for this. And yet, And yet, I'm looking at my city council members, who we voted for, who are public servants, I'd also like to remind you of that, not listen to the people. I was taught to respect my elders, and yet I'm sitting here watching my elders roll their eyes while people talk about their very valid concerns. Now, I'd also like to ask, when you're giving these numbers about these closed water systems and everything, has there been any other place where that has happened? Because I've seen AI data centers that have actually been built in cities all across America, and the things that they are promising are not happening. You can't listen to a large corporation like Meta and base your plans off of what they promise when there are no legal repercussions if they break said promise and put things that we know we need, like water, like clean air, at risk for that. For what? For ChatGPT? We do not need ChatGPT. We do not need Meta. Meta does not care about any single one of us. We do need water. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Eric, I believe, Defford? Defford? Thank you.
Town of Beaver Dam. This pamphlet's nice. The margins are nice. You've got the city colors. I don't see a lot of citing of this information, and the way that this is worded, everything is open-ended. This is propaganda. This is all that this is. This is a bandage for the optics that were created over the months. A lot of these statements, there's nothing citing it. How does this compare to previous data centers? Because the way those are functioning, they're destroying the areas that they're sitting in. And then I guess, again, these decisions that were made behind closed doors in secrecy, how is that representation? How are you representing the people that elected you to these positions if you are doing it in secret? It's ethically kind of gross. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next up is, I believe, Brett Judd.
My name is Brett Judd, and I have lived in Dodge County since nineteen ninety-four, on and off. But if home is where the heart is, it never left Horicon Marsh. And I am steadfastly protective of our shared resources, our shared responsibility to the environment. We are stewards of that area. And I know that some of you have extensive histories in doing things like this and that there's no way that you could, in good faith, sign off on this. So I also want to talk about how, living in the township, I have no representation. Last week when we were here, you said that we needed to speak to our aldermen. And aldermen like Jack Yuds have just straight up said, I don't represent you. I represent so-and-so. But we are all impacted by the choices that you make today and the choices that you made over the last year. And so I'm really shocked by the lack of transparency. You can snow us and you can make some backroom deals, but none of us can escape the consequences of damage to our environment. And I want us to have a good outcome here. I would appreciate it if there would be a moratorium on construction, since this is done in such a backhanded way. I think that there should be a more dignified process for when we make these kinds of decisions in our community. Thank you.
And before we get to the last speaker on the list, Todd, is there anyone online who wants to speak? No? Okay. Okay, then our last speaker for this evening is Emily L.
Hi, my name is Emily. I live in Trenton, less than a fourth of a mile from the Meta data center development. I want to start by acknowledging that you guys do have our, I assume, have our best intentions at heart when making these decisions. However, as others have said, you have broken the people's trust. We feel betrayed. Anyone in Beaver Dam who doesn't feel that way yet just doesn't have enough of the facts. Whether you believe these feelings are warranted or not, the reality is undeniable. The people do not have trust in you anymore. Since the announcement of the development on TID ten was being, since it was announced it was going to be a data center, you have not given your constituents a real opportunity to be heard. Two-minute comment periods are not enough. FAQ sheets are not enough. Meta PR flyers are not enough. Standardized email responses are not enough. Right now, you have a reputation of being the least transparent city council this town has ever seen. But you can change that, starting tonight. Here's what we're formally requesting. A city council member to sponsor adding the data center project, community discussion, and Q and A to a full agenda item. This item should include a minimum of ninety to a hundred and twenty minutes of public input and dialogue, not two-minute comment periods, but an actual back-and-forth conversation with your constituents. All the city council members who voted for this project should be present and prepared to answer questions directly. Relevant city staff, including city administrator, legal counsel, and consultants, including Trent Campbell, should be, anyone who is involved in negotiations should be present and ready to answer technical questions. Alternatively, or maybe additionally, I suggest that the mayor call and authorize a scheduled dedicated special council meeting specifically about the data center in the next thirty days. And this meeting format should include a time for people to ask questions and receive answers in real time. The meeting should be recorded and made publicly available with material illustrated in advance so that people can come with informed questions. And a commitment to a specific date for the meeting should be, and a commitment for a specific date for the meeting should be held. Around two or three weeks from now, we need an actual date. We've been waiting in the dark since twenty twenty-four, and we don't want to wait anymore. So will one of you please commit to sponsoring this meeting for us, please? Every time you redirect us or delay, you erode our trust further. You have the power right now to show us that you're listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
As a citizen of Beaver Dam, I ask that you please listen to the commentary that happened from folks that do not live in Beaver Dam.
Okay, that brings our informal public hearing to a close. At this point, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. If people wish to stay, they're more than welcome to stay, but if they do not want to stay, that's okay too. Okay. Oh, yeah, Alder Flaherty.
May I make a comment? I would just like to thank everybody for taking time to come in and voice their opinion tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Sure, you can, you want to pass it up? We'll take that, definitely. Yeah, thank you. Okay. It's just that it's after eight, I don't know. Okay, I think we are going to continue with tonight's agenda. The next item up is presentation and possible appointment of District Six alderpersons. Alders, as you saw in your packet, we have four, count them, four candidates, kind of exciting, for the opening, and we're going to follow the same procedure that we followed the last time we had a vacancy, which means each of the candidates has already submitted a letter, which you'll find in your packet, and they've also filled out the required paperwork, making them eligible to hold office. So the next step is we're going to ask each of the candidates to come up and to speak, and we'll give them, I think last time we gave them three minutes each, just to explain to us why they think they're the best candidate for this position. So we will start there, and why don't we take them, we'll take them in the order that they were printed in the packet. Hang on, let me pull it up here. Nope. Oh, okay, in the packet, they are, they're in alphabetical order. Oh, no, okay. Yeah, for whatever reason, my Okay, so the first one, thank you, is Mr. Jeff Bierman. So if you want to come forward, Frank, is the mic still on?
Hi, my name is Jeff Bierman, and I live in District Six. Madam Mayor, City Administrator, and fellow alderman, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm seeking to serve as alderman because I believe this community deserves balanced, steady leadership. Today, we are all being constantly hit with information, headlines, alerts, and social media posts designed to trigger immediate emotion or moral reactions. Over time, that wears people down. It creates a fight-or-flight response that makes true problem-solving harder. As leaders, our responsibility is not to dismiss those reactions, but to help our community dial them back to slow things down so people can digest that information thoughtfully, calmly, and most important, respect for each other. If appointed, that's the approach I will bring to this council. A steady hand, a practical mindset, and a commitment, decisions based on facts, not fear. I want to help create an environment where our residents feel heard, supported, and confident that their city is being guided with clarity and purpose. Thank you for your time and consideration.
And then now, at this point, we usually open it up so that council members, any council members have a question they'd like to ask Mr. Bierman? Alder Wild?
Did you say that you were a former mayor and city commissioner?
No, ma'am. I'm a veteran in former law enforcement and currently work in the city of Beaver Dam.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? Alders up?
Thank you for your service in the military and police. What goals would you like to achieve as alder?
Well, as we've seen tonight, you know, the number-one thing on everybody's minds is the data center. Not being part of that decision, I would make sure that, as an alderman, that making them stick with their promises that they made to us as a community, and that is the water and the environment, and holding them responsible if they don't continue their promises that are made during that timeframe.
Excuse me, anyone else have a question? Alder Burnett?
How did you find out about the opening?
My partner was doing some online investigating on the data center. And we were talking, and she mentioned that there was an open spot on the council. We walked in and inquired at what district that was and found out that it was in our district. And after some communication and talk between the two of us, we decided that it would be a good fit to be part of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any else? President Yads?
Even on the councils, every so often, we have to go in a closed session. Are you able to keep the conversation to yourself without telling your family and friends and neighbors? Because this is a, sometimes if it gets out, we could blow a really good deal, good development for the city of Beaver Dam. Is that, I just want to make sure it falls in your realm to understand what this is more than just voting on taxes and stuff like this.
With my time in law enforcement, I completely understand confidentiality and what would happen during leaks, et cetera.
Any other alders with a question? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we're going to hear from Mark Christensen.
Hello, everybody. Some of you are new, some of you I've talked to before about issues regarding privacy about the community. And that was one of the reasons why, when I realized that this spot was open, that I figured it was probably a good time to do it, also because I had watched the video previously showing about how everybody finally came up here and started to voice their grievances. Because I think that's one of the biggest things is transparency with government. For all of you, I'm not going to tell you which agency I work with, but I do work for the federal government. So I actually do actually represent, and I do understand the value of secrecy, being able to pass a background check like Mr. Zop had asked during a different meeting, and making sure that the things are done in the best way. So if the question is whether or not I'm willing to keep secrets, absolutely, as long as they do not violate the law. Because that's the biggest thing here. I think everybody here would believe that an NDA for something that should not have been an NDA for should not have been signed. And I will, that's my pledge to the people to not work in the best interest of the companies and the corporations that want to come here, but of the people. Welcome any questions.
Okay, questions. Alder Zapp?
I'll ask the same question to every candidate. What goals would you like to achieve as alder?
Well, I know the city of Beaver Dam has basically stayed at the same population level for probably about the last twenty, thirty years. It's been around fourteen, sixteen thousand for a long time, so I would like to see the community grow, have more things there. But I don't think building a giant data center is the way to do it. I think having smaller businesses come in, create local jobs, I think that's a much better way to help grow the community.
Any other questions for this candidate? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next up is Naomi Davis.
Good evening. I guess the only reason that I applied for this position or that I think that I fit here is because I've lived in Beaver Dam my whole life, and this position has been open for quite some time. And it makes me nervous to think that it might be split and to have more people added to it. What I think that I can bring to the table in this position is the business sense that I have and the ability to hear people out to the end. And I guess that's what this is all about. That's what we did tonight here. That's really all I have.
Okay, Alder Wild?
What do you mean by split? That things would be split?
I read online that if there was a possibility that if they didn't fill this district, that it could be divided out, so the districts would become bigger.
Thank you.
And Alder Zapp?
Same question. What goals would you like to achieve as alder?
I'd like to support Beaver Dam in any way that I possibly can in its growth.
President Yads?
How would you feel about confidentiality when we talk about issues and you don't sign anything? They're just going on the honor system that you have to go home and don't tell anybody what you just heard during the evening meeting.
I feel good about that. I work on business contracts in my current job that I have to keep pretty quiet about until things are finalized.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Alders? Thank you. And then finally, the fourth candidate is Devon Scharf. Is Devon here? Welcome, Devon. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Devon Scharf of Beaver Dam. Was born and raised here. I moved away, come back, bought a house here. I moved away, come back, bought a house here, pretty much just signed up because nobody did, and I was kind of disappointed in that, and kind of raised here in Beaver Dam that nobody's going to do the job, stand up, do the job yourself. So, that's why I'm here today.
Very good. Questions for Devon? Alder Wild?
Okay, with that statement, if you were picked, would you still be devoted to this position?
Yeah.
You would still do it?
I would. I also think all three of these folks that stood up would be just as good. I won't hurt my feelings if you don't pick me, but, you know, do my best.
Alder Flaherty?
Mr. Scharf, could I inquire of your career background? What did you do for work throughout your life?
I worked for Newman Pools here in town. I worked down in Madison, currently work for American Packaging in Columbus for the last 14 years.
Alders up?
So, same question. What goals would you like to achieve as Alder?
I'd maybe calm the hornet's nest. You guys seem to have stirred up. Definitely address the concerns of the citizens for the well-being of Beaver Dam and the community going forward.
Any, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Scharf. Then, we've heard from all four candidates. This, if desired, we can have an opportunity for Alders to discuss. Is there, Alders, anybody want to make a comment before we vote or raise a question? Oh, Alder Fisher, yeah.
I guess I just want to reiterate my comments of the last meeting. I don't believe that we should be appointing an Alderman, and the appointee will have to take out nomination papers in two weeks and run for office. I do believe that appointing a, an appointment for Alderman at this point will just get my hand up in the coming April election. The, all four of these individuals, plus anybody else, can take out papers on, on December 1st and get 20 of their constituents to sign those papers. That's how you elect an Alderman. You don't appoint him ahead of time in such short notice, and I really believe that this just defies common sense. So, I'll be voting no on all four, and I invite anybody to join me.
Thank you, Alder Fisher. Any other comments? Okay, oh, Alder Flaherty?
Thanks. I do agree with Alder Fisher in part, simply because we're at a pivotal time, and there is a lot going on. I'm not sure about the sensibility of leaving the seat open, however. And I think these four people have come forward, and they've shown an effort to a degree, and we should recognize that in some way. However, we should be thoughtful. These are merely the thoughts from the inside of my head. I hope they're germane and helpful. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Alders up?
They are just kind of curious about the process for voting tonight.
Okay, so, again, we're going to run the process just as we did the last time, which is, our clerk will hand out ballots that has all four names listed. Alders are instructed, first of all, you need to put your name on the ballot so that we have record should we need to go back, and then you circle one. And after the first round of voting, if there isn't any obvious winning candidate, then that will narrow it down, we'll take the top two, and then we'll vote again. So, it's the same process we followed the last time we had a vacancy. Okay, yeah, Alder Flaherty?
Question for Attorney O'Day. Is putting a name on a ballot common practice for something like this, or is it secret?
It can't be secret balloted, so with the, with the written ballot, we need your names on it.
And this is why I ask. Thank you.
Good question. Alders up?
How will Alder Olson be voting tonight?
Oh, good question. We did not think, can he message? Alder Olson, will you message Todd, and he will, can, Todd, would you just fill out a ballot for him? Is that acceptable? He'll, he'll just give you a name, and you circle it and put his, put Olson on the ballot? I don't know if Chris heard me. But I would think that would be acceptable. So, did he, does, do we know if he responded? Or if he heard us? Alder Olson? If he's not here in person? Okay, and he might not be paying attention at this point. So, the clerk is going to hand out the ballots. Again, just put your name, you can just put your last name, circle your choice of candidate, and then, I guess, Vicki, you're going to come around and collect them again? Okay.
Mayor, are you there?
Yeah, Alder, then can you type your choice?
I heard everything. Sorry, Todd had me, like, I understand, I was muted, so I couldn't respond. I just, I was emailing him frantically. So, yeah, I heard everything. Definitely sending that over.
Great, thank you. So, you're going to use the ballot with the four names on it for the first round? And put your name on the ballot as well, please? So, Vicki doesn't have to run everywhere.
You have tons on.
You could run. Handing out, and I'm collecting.
All right, that's a good thing.
Yes.
So, while we, while the clerk tallies the votes, I do want to express my heartfelt appreciation for the four candidates that came forward. I have to say this, I can't speak for the entire council, but I have a feeling some of us were pretty tickled when we got four candidates, because that is not typical. So, I was, I was very pleased to see that size of a response. So, I just want to say thank you for stepping up, and I appreciate your wanting what's best for the city.
So, the second round, then, is going to be between Jeff Beerman and Devon Scharf.
So... Thank you, clerk.
Vote for one or the other. If you did a no vote, then do your no vote, meaning none.
And don't forget, don't forget to put your name on the ballot, please.
So, Jeff or Devon, and then, or no vote if that's what you did before. Okay, we have five for Jeff and four for Devon. So, Jeff Beerman, you would be the, the appointed one.
Thank you very much. If you want to step forward, Mr. Beerman, we will swear you in.
You can probably come over here.
Apparently, I haven't seen the ballots.
Could I?
Alders up? You have a question?
This might be a question for, this is...
Is this an attorney question?
This is an attorney question. Is it a vote of the majority of seated or a majority, a vote of those present?
A majority of those who voted.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so raise your hand. You have to meet. Jeff Beerman has been appointed to the position of District Six, all the person. In and for the city of Beaver Dam, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duty of said office to the best of my ability.
So, Alder Beerman, if you want to have a seat, and let me just say that as a, as a sworn member of this body, you are welcome to contribute and vote for the rest of the meeting. However, it is perfectly acceptable, since you have not received the materials, the packet ahead of time, to just abstain from voting at this point, whatever you feel comfortable doing. So, but please feel free to ask questions and, and join in. Thank you.
Mayor, if I ask one more question?
Yes, yes, Alders up?
Will the new Alder be seated to the Administrative Committee at the next meeting?
I would say yes, because, to fill the, it's, wait, yeah.
Operations?
Yeah, Ken, he, he's filling Ken's slot, but he'll be, he'll take Ken's position on ops, operations, yeah. Till April, and then we'll...
Making sure we get seated in the right spots.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Next up is announcements. Alders, any, anything you want to share with us? Yeah, President Yads?
Some of you have probably noticed, I put this on your desk, just to let you know where your word is. I was looking through it, and I lost a block. I didn't realize I had. But it, it does happen, but just for your information, just so you can keep track of where you are, because they changed them a couple of years ago, and I really got mixed up since then. But just, just for your information. Thank you.
And please note, that document is also available to everyone. It's on our website. There's both a map of Aldermanic districts and the, the street list that you have in front of you, so anybody can easily look on the city website for this information. Any other announcements? Okay, I do have just brief announcement. Even though it's November, we're starting to think about the holiday season, and I just want to remind folks that there are some holiday events coming up. The big one, of course, is Rotary Lights that opens in Swan Park on November 28th. So, you're all invited to the official lighting ceremony, which is at 5 o'clock on that date. And I think Rotary has done just an amazing job of growing that, that project into something that is truly amazing and something we shall be proud of. So, if you can head on down there anytime, it, it will be open starting on the 28th and going through, I believe, January 3rd. So, yeah, head on down to Swan Park and, and support the Rotary. Good. Any, anyone else have an announcement? Okay, then we're going to move on to disposition of the minutes of the Common Council meeting for November 3rd. The minutes were listed in your packet. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes as printed? Alder Burnett?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second, Alder Flaherty?
Seconded.
Any discussion, corrections, concerns before we vote? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes as printed, so signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, the minutes are approved. Next up, our City Administrator Report. What do you have for us, Larry?
Well, it's been a very busy couple of weeks. We had a pretty big announcement. Then, we had the Police and Fire Commission meeting. We did receive a significant donation from Yankee Pigly Wiggly for the fire department's dive team, so thank you to them. I spoke at the November 11 Chamber of Commerce breakfast meeting, and let's see. Basically, it's been a lot of, lot of other meetings, a lot of business as usual, still working on the, the wage grid with staff, and, you know, having our, our normal check-in meetings, so trying to stay busy and get things ready for you, so. Does anybody have question, can I ask for questions?
Sure. Yeah, anybody have, have questions for Larry? Okay. Next up are communications.
There are no communications tonight.
Thank you, clerk. Next up is the approval of the bills from October 31st to November 13th in the amount of $1,762,238. Can I get a motion? Alders up?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
Good. Anyone else, or a second? Alder Farid?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussions or questions? We do have Kayla here, so now would be the perfect time. Do you want to ask questions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the payment of the bills as printed, so signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, the bills are approved. Next up, we will have a presentation and public hearing on the city of Beaver Dam proposed budget for fiscal year 2026. I want to reference page 35 in your packet if you're looking ahead, and we will have Ask Kayla Larson, our finance director, to come forward.
Okay, so this should be a pretty brief presentation, as there really hasn't been any changes since I was last up here to discuss the draft budget. So, first, we'll just go over the budget timeline, or the outline for the presentation. We'll go through the budget timeline, what we've done to get to this point, do like a high-level review of the general fund budget, go over the tax rate and the levy impacts, and then review the CIP budget as well. So, as far as the timeline, July through August, department heads and managers met with the interim city administrator and myself to review their requests and their baseline budget. September 15th, we held a budget workshop out at the Department of Public Works. October 20th...
October 20th, we presented the draft budget, the utility budgets, as well as the CIP budget. And then October 30th, we published the general fund budget in the paper. And then that brings us to tonight for the public hearing and budget adoption. So this just gives a general review of the 2026 general fund budget compared to last year's or this current year's budget. So you'll see the general fund expenditures went up, as we discussed in the past, largely resulting in the police and fire union contracts that were passed, as well as another, a few other various increases just to generally expenses and inflation. We had the increase in the debt service. Again, that was largely related to the unfunded liability and the state trust fund loan. 2026 is the first scheduled payment for that or the first required payment. We did also have an increase in general fund revenues. So there was some additional aid payments. We have an increase in shared revenue. And then our tax levy. So as discussed during the draft budget, part of that is related to the chargebacks that we had from prior assessed values. We also had the property that was annexed in, so we get to increase our levy by that cost from last year's tax. And then we had the net new construction allowable increase that's reflected there. And then again, you're going to see that levy for the debt service payments. So that's really the majority of that increase, but those other ones do contribute as well. And then we can add in the TID levy, so that did increase. We've seen some increased values in the TID. And then gives us our total, total levy there on the bottom for the 14.6. As far as the tax impact, so this reflects the difference between the 2024 taxes and then the 2025 taxes we're getting ready for here in December. So that median increased house value went up about 18 and a half. The estimated mill rate with this budget actually goes down by 16 cents. And then the impact of that on the actual taxes itself, because of that increase on the assessed values, does show an increase on that median household of $115. This compares the tax rates, looks at the other taxing jurisdictions compared from last year to this year. I did actually receive the county levy later today after I created this. So I will comment that the 2025 for the county, instead of the 3.33, is 3.41. And so then that net change is a reduction of just the two cents instead of the 10, bringing the overall gross tax rate to 1,897. So basically a flat change. It's a decrease of a penny instead of the nine cents that you see here. And then the state tax credit is still unknown at this point because we haven't received that notification from the state. But estimating what I, what we think it'll be should land us about at 17.56 instead of the 17.38, which is actually an overall increase of nine cents instead of the decrease of nine cents you see here. And then you just, sorry, Todd. So on the, on the right, you can kind of see how that breaks up in the percentage. So out of this overall tax or the mill rate, the city of Beaver Dam is 45%. The school district is 33, the tech college is 3%, and then Dodge County is 19%. And then this is just a general review of the CIP. The only changes that were made here was to reflect the, reflect the library windows that will now be funded by the library fund, as well as a donation we received towards the dive equipment for next year. And then also Dodge County is, with their budget, passed a portion of funding the dive equipment as well. So we reduced the debt service shown under the facilities, equipment, and vehicles to reflect those changes, otherwise still all the same from the draft budget. The 2027 CIP commitments, just to be aware of, with this budget, you're committing to the Department of Public Works to be able to order a plow truck in '26 to receive and fund in '27. There still are significant lead times in getting that type of equipment. So in order to get that timely, we're asking you to commit to that for the '27 CIP. And then as well as the fire department looking to replace one of the ambulances, looking to order that in '26 and receive and fund in '28. That's how far the lead times are expected for that. So just wanted you to be aware that with this CIP, it includes those commitments in future years. Beyond that, there really were no other changes since the draft budget. Okay, okay, Alders, questions or comments for Kayla? Oh, Aldo Ganski.
Yeah, I was just wondering about the hometown project because we said that we were going to move money around for, to satisfy ARPA.
So we moved at our last meeting. At our last meeting, we moved ARPA out of 2025 and settled the ARPA account, which frees up capital funds in 2025. Ultimately, the board should weigh in as to whether that money is used. Kayla, write for 2025 or if you want to use it in 2026. So or when you want to use that funding. There is an outstanding request of about $13,000 for the plaza engineering. And so we'll be looking for the city council to provide some direction. If that's something you want to pursue, we should, should make the transition for 2025 or in 2026 as part of this budget. So I'm guessing you're going to want that in the 2026 budget and.
Well, I would say if we can put it in the '25, since we already have the money freed up, then I would say go for it, but yeah.
It's, it's really a decision that you have to, you have to decide. I mean, as an elected.
I guess, but my understanding is he's asking if there is that money currently, that flexibility currently in the budget right now.
In 2025, there is.
Okay.
And it is freed up because of what we did with the ARPA funds at our last meeting. But the question will be, does the city council wish to do that? To use the 13,000 to support it?
Okay, so how do we do that? Do I need to make a motion for that? Is this the appropriate time for that?
I'm going to defer to Kayla. I'm fearful it's going to trigger a budget amendment, but if we have.
Yeah, I mean, I would say it's probably not really relevant to tonight's agenda unless it's something that you're looking to add to the 2026 CIP, in which case you could then amend it during the resolution for the CIP.
Yep.
Would that, does that sound correct? Yeah. Otherwise, there are a few other things that will need to be addressed with the kind of shifting of those funds, like the DRC funds for the facade improvements. There are projects that they've committed to funding that I think we need to address. And so I think it was our intention to also come with recommendations at the first meeting in December. I think that's, Larry, that's what you and I had discussed. So if that's something we want to include on that, we could. And then there's a resolution to act on it for '25. Or in the future, would be my thought. Well, and I think it would be cleaner because we're treating the package of ARPA fundings, you know, we're treating it as a package. So I think it would be cleaner if we would consider them together.
At the next meeting, you want the agenda?
Yeah, that's just my opinion in terms of how we handle. I don't want to see the hometown project go away, but I think it would be cleaner if we waited and dealt with all of the ARPA decisions at once.
Yeah, ARPA is.
Yeah, well, our former ARPA fund decisions, yeah.
Okay, so we're going to address using the '25 funds for those projects at the next meeting? Is that what I understand?
It sounds that that is the direction.
Okay.
Yeah, well.
My role to take direction, so you can.
So we'll put that on the agenda and we'll, we'll have to discuss it.
Sounds good.
Okay, good. Any other questions? For Kayla? And just in light of the, the enjoyably large audience that we have present for a budget hearing, we don't usually have this many people. I just want to reassure people that the council has spent, we had an entire evening budget workshop where we went into this entire budget in much more detail. And then we've been kept reminded of any potential changes that were coming between the draft budget, which we looked at during our workshop in September, and the final budget which we're seeing now. So this is not the first time that the councilists are seeing all these numbers. Part of the process. Okay. So then, thank you, Kayla. If there aren't any other questions, we're going to continue with ordinances and we'll be, we will get back. Oh, you're right. Well, do we do it now or do we do it when we get to those resolutions? Do it now? Okay. So in order, before we can pass the budget, we need to have a public hearing. So the time for comments on this budget is now. So if you would like to speak to council about the proposed budget, now would be the time. If there's anyone in person or online who would like to speak to council about this proposed budget, please make your presence known. And for the third time, I must ask if there's anyone who would like to comment on this upcoming budget, now would be the time. Yeah, if you're online, can you raise your hand? And we will respond. Okay. Seeing no response, we will close the public hearing and we will move on to ordinances. We will be voting on the budget when we get to resolutions. Okay, so the first ordinance.
Ordinance number 8-2025 and ordinance rezoning parcel number 206-1114-0422-057, located at 202 West Maple Avenue, from commercial district to two-family residential district.
Okay, can I get a motion? President Yads?
I'll make that motion to change the ordinance. Change the zoning.
Thank you, and Alders Zapp?
A second.
Very good. Comments or questions? Okay, okay. First and second reading, okay. So if you are here to speak about this rezoning located at 202 West Maple Avenue, and you would like to speak to council about this issue, now is the time to come forward. So whether you are online or in person, if you're online, please raise your hand. And you would like to speak to council about rezoning the parcel located at 202 West Maple Avenue. And for a third and final time, if you are interested in speaking to council about rezoning of 202 West Maple Avenue, please make your presence known. Seeing none, then we will move on to discussion, possible questions. Alders, any comments or questions? Alders Zapp?
Is anyone here from Beaver Dam Properties LLC or? Oh, okay, so just not sure where you are, but, but thank you. So I did notice that you are investing in Beaver Dam and developing properties and developing housing in Beaver Dam. I just wanted to thank you, thank you for investing in Beaver Dam. So wherever, wherever you are, oh, thank you for investing in Beaver Dam, so.
Okay, Alder Burnett?
I just have a question. From the information we have, there's a statement that says the rezoning is to accommodate an existing duplex development. If you could explain what that means?
I put that in there. It's an existing duplex, that's what that means. So it's a former commercial property that was converted into a duplex. Is that correct, Tony? Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions or comments, Alder? And I believe this went through operations last, at our last meeting, their last meeting?
At their last meeting, yeah.
Yeah. So I don't know. Any comments from operations, but? Okay, then I think we are ready to vote.
Burnett?
Aye.
Burnett?
Aye.
Farri?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Flaherty?
Aye.
Anskey?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Olson?
I'm just going to, I'm going to ask, can I vote because I can't get my camera to work and I don't want to vote if I'm not allowed to without my camera.
Yeah, we have to be, sorry, Chris, we have to be able to see you.
No, that's fair. Technical difficulties. I'll have to pass. Thank you.
Perkins?
Aye.
Wild?
Aye.
Yads?
Aye.
Zapp?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, Beerman?
So the motion carries. Next up, ordinance, next ordinance.
Ordinance number 9-2025 and ordinance rezoning parcel number 206-1114-0412-088.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, was your name not called? Oh.
Right at the beginning, Burnett, sorry. Yeah, Burnett, okay, I thought it, Burnett, Farri, I'm sorry, I thought I did.
Thank, thank you for speaking up. We have it correct now. It still carries, but very good.
All right, let's go again. Ordinance number 9-2025 and ordinance rezoning parcel number 206-1114-0412-088, and 206-1114-0412-091, located at 105, 109, and 113 North Lincoln Avenue, from commercial district to multifamily residential, also first and second reading.
Okay, so it, since it's the first and second reading, we are required to have a public hearing, correct? So if there's anyone either in person or online who would like to speak to the rezoning of these three properties on North Lincoln Avenue, now is the time to come forward and speak to council. Again, if there's anyone either online or in person who wants to talk about the rezoning of properties at 105 through 113 North Lincoln Avenue, now would be your opportunity. And finally, last call for anyone who would like to speak to council about the rezoning request that is being made on North Lincoln Avenue. Anyone? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. And at this point, can I get a motion? Aldo Ganski?
Motion to approve the rezoning request.
Thank you, and a second, Aldo Wild?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion? Comments? Alders Zapp?
Mayor, so just kind of looking at the development in the area, did this, did this go through the planning and development committee or the downtown committee or I guess?
It, it went through the planning, planning commission.
Just, just checking, okay.
Yeah. Yep. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none? I guess we're ready to call the roll.
Burnett?
Aye.
Flaherty?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Flaherty?
Aye.
Ganskey?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Olson, Epstein? Perkins?
Aye.
Wild?
Aye.
Yads?
Aye.
Zapp?
Aye.
Beerman?
Epstein.
And Burnett?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, it's. Next up, it's on to resolutions.
Resolution number ninety three dash twenty twenty five, a resolution to approve the city of Beaver Dam twenty twenty six fee schedule.
So, and you can find this on page forty six in your packet. Any questions or comments about the proposed fee schedule? Or I guess it's updates really to the, to our current fee schedule? And if I'm not mistaken, these are presented at our budget workshop as well. So we've, we've seen these before. Okay, then perhaps can I get a motion?
I'll approve the fee schedule.
Thank you, Alder Burnett, Alder Perkins.
Second.
Okay, last chance for comments. Okay, let's call the roll.
Furry.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Flaherty.
Aye.
Anskey.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Olson, Perkins.
Aye.
Wild.
Aye.
Yads.
Aye.
Zap.
Aye.
Beerman. Burnett.
Aye.
Burnett.
Aye.
So the fee schedule carries, next up, resolution ninety four.
Resolution number ninety four dash twenty twenty five, a resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget.
Okay, so this one is on the capital budget, and if you look on page fifty five in your packet, it's, Kayla referenced it just a little while ago. Can I get a motion? Alder Burnett.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number ninety four, two thousand twenty five.
And a second, Alder Ganski.
I'll second.
Thank you, questions or discussion? About our, our capital improvement plan or capital budget? Alders up.
Could I ask Todd about our, our outlook for, for roadwork? I know we pushed things back, Pleasant Street got pushed back a year, which pushed back Lake Shore Drive another year on top of that. I mean, I guess Larry too, do we have a plan to make these stick? I mean, how, how? I know, it's, we, we keep putting them in there and then pushing it back, so. Uh, maybe just kind of general awareness, or, or I guess for Larry, I mean, you being new as administrator role, that we're in a cycle of pushing, pushing these back. Year after year, looking at Pleasant Street being a two million dollar hit. And then every year after that, it's a million and a half or more, one point nine million for multiple years for Lake Shore Drive, so just kind of awareness for new Alders as well, that we're, we're, we're in a, a hole with our, our road. It's road renewal or roads that are dilapidated and need replacement, we're, we're in a, a tough position of facing repeated two million dollar a year situations. It's, it's, it's tough, so just kind of general awareness to that.
Yep, that's a great reminder that.
Thank you.
Roads are our priority and inflation is real, next year that road will be more expensive.
Thank you, Alders up, any other comments? Okay, then I think we're ready to vote. Uh, we're on ninety four dash twenty twenty five. Let's see, Alder, Alder Burnett made the motion and Alder Ganski seconded.
All right, Fisher.
Aye.
Flaherty.
Aye.
Anskey.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Perkins.
Aye.
Wild.
Aye.
Yads.
Aye.
Zap.
Aye.
Beerman. Burnett.
Aye.
Burnett.
Aye.
Furry.
Aye.
So the resolution passes. Next up is resolution number ninety six.
Resolution number ninety six dash twenty twenty five, a resolution authorizing.
Oh, I'm sorry, we skipped ninety five.
Ninety five?
Yeah, we're on ninety five.
Resolution number ninety five dash twenty twenty five, a resolution adopting the budget for the city of Beaver Dam, Wisconsin for the fiscal year twenty twenty six.
Kind of a biggie there, can I get a motion? Alder Burnett.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution ninety five, twenty twenty five.
Thank you, and a second, Alder Wild.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, questions, discussion, comments? About next year's budget?
If I could, I just want to pull out a special thank you for the finance director. Kayla Larson has done virtually all of the work on this with department heads. She ushered us through the transition from one city administrator to another and deserves a lot of the credit for putting all of this document together and presenting at multiple meetings, so thank you, Kayla.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, one of the problems with transitions, so. Good, any other questions or comments? Okay, then we need to vote.
Flaherty.
Aye.
Anskey.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Perkins.
Aye.
Wild.
Aye.
Yads.
Aye.
Zap.
Aye.
Burnett.
Aye.
Beerman.
Epstein.
Burnett.
Aye.
Furry.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
So the budget for twenty twenty six is passed. Next up, resolution ninety six.
Resolution number ninety six dash twenty twenty five, a resolution authorizing a state municipal financial agreement for a signal and ITS standalone program project.
Okay, for purpose of discussion, can I get a motion? Thank you, Alder Burnett, and a second, Alders up.
I'll second.
Thank you. Todd, do we need to refresh people's memories or maybe just, just the short version, we've seen this before, so.
We have seen this before, so back in, well, at least operations has seen this before. Back in July, we were awarded a pretty sizable grant to replace the signals at University and Park Ave. Grant funding is seven hundred sixty five thousand dollars, it's ninety percent funded, so the city share is about eighty five thousand, that's in the capital improvement plan you guys just approved. What's before you is the agreement with the state in order to get the project rolling. So asking for approval of the, the state municipal agreement, so we can get it back to the state and start engineering on the project for twenty six.
Okay, any questions for Todd or any comments? There's a pretty thorough explanation in your packet if you had a chance to look. Okay, seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Flaherty.
Aye.
Anskey.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Perkins.
Aye.
Wild.
Aye.
Yads.
Aye.
Zap.
Aye.
Beerman.
Epstein.
Burnett.
Aye.
Burnett.
Aye.
Furry.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
And the resolution passes, finally, the last resolution of the evening, number ninety seven.
Resolution number ninety seven dash twenty twenty five, a resolution awarding the contract for the twenty twenty five library building window replacement project.
Okay, can I get a motion? Thank you, Alder Burnett, and Alder Perkins? Thank you, and, no, Todd, do we want to comment or? Oh, I'm sorry, oh, John, John, you're here, welcome, do you want to give us the summary?
Sure, um, as I feel the operations committed in early, earlier tonight, this is to replace the remaining windows in the library along with the, with the remodel project. There's a total of fifty that date back to nineteen eighty four. So everything will be completely new. We went out to bid a couple, two and a half weeks ago, we had seven plan sets go out, we had two responsible bidders reply. We're recommending a little bidder this evening. That's all I got.
Thank you, John, any questions for, for John? Okay, thanks. Anybody want to comment? Okay, then I think we are ready to vote.
Ganski.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Perkins.
Aye.
Wild.
Aye.
Yads.
Aye.
Zap.
Aye.
Beerman.
Epstein.
Burnett.
Aye.
Burnett.
Aye.
Furry.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Flaherty.
Aye.
Very good, the resolution carries, before we ask for a motion to adjourn, I just want to say, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving season and good luck, dear hunters. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Alder Burnett.
Motion to adjourn.
And a second? President Yads.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, all those who approve.